Hi. There's a lot of people here, probably from the letters that went out. I don't think they're all here for all these applications.
Chopping.
I think that's what they're here for. Oh, catch my breath. Cheers. They're waiting for you, not me. I'm glad. If you saw me, say no. I'm not so certain because I have it on the tip. What did I do? I said no. I was like afraid. They didn't bother to tell me. We're having some technical difficulty. As long as it's not me. As long as it's not me.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for your patience. We will get started soon. We just have difficulty with the live stream technology, not broadcasting. So we do have someone coming in right now to hopefully fix it. We get this live stream on television and we'll proceed. So thank you for your patience.
Hope we're not ready yet. Oh, sorry. That's when he thought he could go home. Yeah. And you're the only one. I know. What? Oh, okay. Did I give you the wrong thing? I was ready to look at that and go, what did I do? I can't be the wrong thing because I weigh down so fast. I'm ready when you are.
We're live? Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of the Township of Union Planning Board to order on November 17. Sunshine Notice.
Pursuant to the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting stating the time and place was satisfied by the filing of an annual notice with the local source and the Star Ledger, newspapers of general circulation within the Township of Union, and posted on the bulletin board of the Township of Union Municipal Building.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Espinoza? Mr. Frain?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Perkins?
Here.
Mayor Bowser?
Here.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Here.
Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Khalid? Chairman Lay?
Here. Next item on our agenda, can we swear in the engineer, please?
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
I do. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of the October 23 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cohen. Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Miller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frain?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Bowser?
Yes.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Chairman Lay?
Yes. Next item up is a presentation from Kristen Russell on the area in need of redevelopment study. And can we swear in Ms. Russell, please?
Yes. Ms. Russell, raise your hand, please. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Good evening, everybody. Kristen Russell with Colliers Engineering and Design. I'm here tonight first to present the block 2918 North, area in need of redevelopment study. At this point, I think you're all relatively familiar with the redevelopment process, of which this is the first step, where we identify an area and run through a process to see if that area qualifies by the state law for redevelopment. Tonight, we're looking at seven blocks on Block 2918. There are lots 3.01, 5, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Combined, they are 1.15 acres, and is generally located at the southwest corner of Stuyvesant Avenue and Roosevelt Avenue. There's also a piece that is farther back on Roosevelt Avenue, and this is across Roosevelt Avenue from an existing redevelopment project on Stuyvesant. The existing zoning at the site today is a combination of DC, that's downtown core, and those are the lots that front on Stuyvesant Avenue, and downtown transition. If you're looking at the map, the downtown transition is the lighter pink, and those are the lots fronting Roosevelt. Both zones allow for the same uses, which includes retail sales and services, restaurants, offices, and residential above the ground floor. The difference between the two zones today is that the DC zone, which is the zone fronting Stuyvesant, has a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet, whereas the downtown transition is 12,500. And another difference is that the building height maximum in the downtown core is 52 feet and four stories, and the downtown transition is 40 feet and three stories. So that's what the zoning is today. Just a few pictures of the history of the area, because there actually wasn't a whole lot over the years that has changed. In 1954, you can see that there's already development on these sites at the far left, where there's a parking lot today. It was tree cover, but that's really the only change over all that time. Once we get into present day, you can see between 2012 and 2025, the lot adjacent along Stuyvesant, which is to the right, has been developed, but again, very minimal change on the sites and even in the area more broadly. So the local redevelopment and housing law is the law that tells us what we can and can't do with redevelopment, and it sets forth criteria that need to be met in order to qualify. There are, you can see here is criteria A through E, then the next page has all the way through H. I've marked in bold the criteria that we'll be talking about tonight, because any property does not need to qualify for all of them. It only needs to qualify for some, and there's also an exception to that, which I'll get to. Criterion B is the discontinuance of use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping, office, manufacturing, industrial, and the abandonment of such building or buildings, or significant vacancies for at least two consecutive years, or the same being allowed to go into a state of disrepair. Criterion C is land that is owned by the municipality, county, or local housing authority, redevelopment agency, or unimproved vacant land that has remained vacant for 10 years, and that by reason of its location remoteness, so on, is not likely to be developed through the instrumentality of private capital. Criterion D is areas with buildings or improvements, which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement, are detrimental to the safety, health, and morals and welfare of the community. And then skipping forward, there's this additional criterion, which is called Section 3, and that allows us to include land, buildings, or improvements, which by themselves are not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare, but inclusion of which is necessary for the larger project. So I'm going to go through each of the seven lots very briefly. I can take certainly, as always, questions at the end if you have more specific questions about any particular parcel, but I'll go through each of them now. Lot 3.01 is actually a very skinny parcel. It was supposed to be a right-of-way at one point, which never happened. In the photograph that you're looking at, it's really that asphalt surface, nothing else. It's township-owned, and this would qualify under Criterion C. The site is limited by its undersized area, its long, narrow geometry. Next door to that is Lot 5. It's a two-story, two-family residence in good condition, but it appears to be vacant. This one would be looked at under Section 3, because it itself does not appear to exhibit conditions that would meet the redevelopment criteria. But in order to develop that long, narrow parcel next to it, it would need to be included in order to do that. Lot 8 is on Roosevelt Avenue. It's actually behind the former Chioffees Restaurant. It's recently demolished. It had been a residence in poor condition. There's a little sticking point with the local redevelopment and housing law, which is to say, had this been done at the time that a dilapidated house was there, it would have very easily qualified. But because it was torn down before this study was conducted, it no longer qualifies. So Section 3, again, as I will get to the other parcels, you'll see why this is important for the overall development. It's one of those situations where timing was not in our favor. Lot 9 is the former Chioffees Restaurant, vacant restaurant with corner frontage. It's a one-story building. It has front and rear parking lots that don't meet current design standards, and it exceeds the permitted lot coverage. This qualifies under Criterion D, which is a faulty arrangement or design, excess land coverage. A one-story building in the downtown core is not conducive to a vibrant, active downtown. The parking areas do not meet design or safety standards. 100% lot coverage exceeds the 90% permitted, and these factors make this site detrimental to the safety and welfare of the community. Lot 10 is right next door to there. It's a one-story office building, currently vacant, exceeds the permitted lot coverage. Similar to the lot next door, the rear parking does not meet the current design standards, unsafe circulation, and it actually has shared circulation configuration with Lot 11 next door. This would qualify under Criterion D for faulty arrangement and design. It's a one-story building in the downtown core, which is not conducive to a vibrant, active downtown. The parking area does not meet design or safety standards, and it has excess lot coverage of 100%, where 90 is permitted. And again, combined, these factors make the site detrimental to the safety and welfare of the community.
Say goodnight. What happened?
Wifi with that.
Lot 10, I'm sorry, Lot 11 is a three-story office building. It's been vacant for several years and exceeds the permitted lot coverage. The rear parking does not meet the current design standards, unsafe circulation, and it also shares a circulation configuration with that lot next door, which I just described.
Okay, thank you.
This qualifies under Criterion B, which that has been vacant for more than two years, as well as Criterion D, which is a faulty arrangement or design, excessive lot coverage, parking area which does not meet designer safety standards, and 100% lot coverage where 90 is permitted. The final lot that we're studying tonight is Lot 12, and this is the municipal parking lot. The municipal parking lot seems to be in decent condition and is being used, but it is qualified under Section 3, so that it can be included in the larger study area. Again, this is municipally owned, and they asked that this be part of our study. That's the summary of what we're looking at tonight. Again, it's seven lots combined. Two of them are a little bit separated from the rest, but there's no state regulation prohibiting that, and it is anticipated that if this were to be adopted by the governing body, that the next step in the process would be to create a redevelopment plan. But as far as this evening is concerned, it's just about making a referral to the governing body if you agree with the conclusions of this study, or if you have any other recommendations to that body.
Thank you. Questions from the board. Mr. Cohen?
So because this is a study of an area in need of redevelopment, why wouldn't lots 6 and 7 be included as well?
Well, they could have been, but you can always include anything, but it's always best, well, I shouldn't say best. Union would prefer that property owners themselves be on board, and there was no coordination with those property owners in this case, so I was not asked to study it. I only studied the lots that I was assigned.
Got it. Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
I had a quick question on the lots that you cited, Criterion D, with regards to parking area not meeting design and safety standards, factors that would basically compromise the safety and welfare. Can you cite specific examples of design deficiencies that would prompt that criterion to be met?
Yes. For example, the current zoning code, I'm almost positive, has a parking stall size of 10 by 20 and a parking aisle width of 24 feet. You need to be able to turn around on your site, you know, if you're going to park and then you want to pull out of the property, for example. The two sites, lots 10 and 11, that I raised this evening, really need to back up onto each other's property in order to make that turn, getting in and out.
And what's going to happen with the lot that was, where the house was torn down in advance of this study?
What do you mean, what's going to happen?
Lot 3, was it Lot number 3? House that was in bad condition?
Mm-hmm. Lot 8. What's your question?
Does this, will this be included, then?
It will be included, so the parcels, it is our, it is my recommendation, that the parcels that are qualified as Section 3 may still be included with the acknowledgement that for the greater good of the whole area, in order to enable a comprehensive redevelopment, that they be included. Should this board agree?
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Before I ask questions from the public, if you can just indulge probably some of our newer members of the board in, as well as just the public, can you just provide an overview of this entire process?
Yes.
From area in need of development, to the redevelopment plan, to a possible site plan?
Yes.
And how this is not necessarily a guarantee that the land would be actually built or redeveloped?
Yes. Okay. So the redevelopment process, for anybody who's not familiar with it, is, in short, three steps. Technically, it's a little more than that, but for the purposes of this description, it's three steps. And this is the first step tonight. The area in need study, which means that we have looked, as I presented to everybody this evening, we have looked at a identified series collection of lots and applied these criteria to them. Over the course of a study such as this, it may be found that some lots do or do not qualify, and with that information that we find, this planning board will make a recommendation to the governing body as to how they feel about the study, and the governing body will adopt a resolution, either declaring the parcels an area in need of redevelopment, declaring some of the parcels as in need of redevelopment, or saying, no, we don't agree with that. That's step one. Step two is writing a redevelopment plan, and a redevelopment plan is the zoning. It would be new zoning for the site, written with much more detail, generally, than the zoning that you would find in your zoning code. So we can get, the law allows us to get a bit more specific in terms of the look of things, the design, the architecture, as well as things like height, and use, and setbacks, and parking. All of that goes into a redevelopment plan. And again, that document needs to be recommended by the planning board and ultimately adopted by the governing body. So just because if tonight is recommended and adopted, there's still the second step, which would also have to be recommended and adopted, and at that stage, the planning board and the governing body would also have the opportunity to say no. The third step in the process, which is the same as for any development, pretty much, which is to say that a developer who wishes to build on the site would need to submit an application for site plan to the township, and then the planning board would have their third chance to review the proposal and say yes or no. Of course, if it complied fully with the redevelopment plan, they would have little opportunity to say no, but if it deviated from that site plan, the planning board would again be able to say, no, that's not what we want. Those are the three steps. What I should point out and neglected to say at the beginning is that step one in no way covers the use or the, it doesn't touch on zoning, what size of buildings will be there, and what uses will be there. That's not part of what we're talking about tonight. That is part of what happens in step two. So should this go forward, that would be an eventual, you know, another conversation.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Questions from the public? If you can come to the mic, please. You would need to come to the microphone. Just identify yourself and just make sure you speak into the mic.
Forgot to spell her name.
Good evening.
I'm a resident of 989 Roosevelt Avenue, which is right across, I guess it would be, I can't hear. From...
Can you state the name for the record, just because?
Anita Sha.
Thank you.
Lot 9, which used to be Chioffees. So I'm a little confused about how it doesn't benefit the safety and welfare of the community when that restaurant has been in the community, I think, 40 years? I don't know. More?
It doesn't speak to the restaurant at all.
I know, but as far as it being not fit or not benefit the welfare or safety of the community, that's why it needs redevelopment?
Correct. So to have a...
It's been there for many years.
Yes.
To which benefit the community, because many people come and...
A business, a former business had been there. There is currently no business there.
Yes.
So a active, vibrant, rejuvenated downtown needs more activity than a one-story building in order to see the street life that is desired, also needs to protect the safety of pedestrians and other drivers, which the current arrangement of that parking lot, and I can speak to this firsthand, because I've tried to park there, just does not do. So in a more ideal development, you would see most likely some, perhaps a restaurant on the ground floor, and perhaps something above it, that could really activate the neighborhood on a more full day, and perhaps into the evening type of, you know, scale.
Okay. So you mean adding to a, maybe something in a way of a same business, but develop more?
Well, I can't speak to what would be allowed there, but I would anticipate that restaurants would probably still be permitted, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. And who is the planning board?
These people.
And you are?
I am a consultant that works for the township.
Okay. And I want to add that as far as, you know, adding other redevelopment of the, well, I want to say first that the house next to Chioffees, I guess, is, I don't know what lot it was. It was not dilapidated. People, I mean, I saw the whole thing. I saw Chioffees coming down. I saw the house next to it that were full of renters came down, so it wasn't dilapidated in any way. So there was a lot of, there were renters living happily there until it was demolished. And then as far as going down the Roosevelt Mall, it's right next to a school.
Yes.
So I think commercial buildings coming up on Roosevelt, period, it's going to interfere with talking about safety and welfare of the community. There are little children everywhere, running around.
I'm sure the township, yeah.
And there's already parking problems now. There'll be problem, there'll be congestion, there will be detriment, actually, to the welfare of the children. And I also want to say that we wish we had known about this earlier. I feel like everything came down, and then now we're told. It would have been nice to have a previous notification of redevelopment. We've heard rumors, I even had like, you know, I had realtors coming to my door every single day to tell me that a developer is coming, and before I hear from the town, so that's a little disheartening. I wish I had heard something from the town. And I believe that, if I may speak with, you know, people of Union, is that we're generally not very happy with these big buildings coming up, and I think that's something that we need to be mindful for. I particularly don't, you know, wouldn't object to another Chioffees, another restaurant there. I think Chioffees was doing very good business, and it's really good for downtown. But as far as another big, I think what people are wary of is another huge apartment complex on such a small street, next to a school. It just will not, will not do, and will be fiercely opposed of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Good, good. How are you? Thank you for coming tonight. I just want to give a reminder, this is a question period. There is an ability to make comments, so you have the ability to come back to make comments, but please, as the game show Jeopardy, raise and inform of question.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Scarpellini, 980 Roosevelt. Just had a quick question for you guys. So the first one is, as the previous lady mentioned, we do have a school on that street, and as of right now, the traffic is horrendous, besides the fact that, you know, while people are picking up their kids, it's very dangerous because of how people are parking to wait for their kids, as it is right now. So is there a game plan that you guys are putting in place, you know, for that redevelopment that will help, you know, that situation versus add on to it?
So I do not yet know what will be redeveloped on that site. The uses are not known, I do not know what they are. So I would say that any, when a use is decided, certainly the traffic and the parking is part of the decision-making process and part of what's decided to go there.
Okay, understood. And then...
If just, if, if I can interject and just refer, Mr. Danave, can you speak of the center-wide traffic flow and traffic, parking and flow and circulation study that the town is conducting?
Sure. You know, I just told the board about this, this evening. The administration has authorized a traffic study for the entire downtown, a comprehensive traffic study and parking study that will incorporate circulation as well because of all the different types of development that have happened over the last few years. There are concerns from different neighborhoods, so they're undertaking a comprehensive study. And clearly, it's been stated that any, any development like this that's being initiated now where we're talking about an area in need of redevelopment would, would happen after this comprehensive study's been completed, as well as the recommendations hopefully have been implemented or they'll be implemented as part of the redevelopment plan for any, any site. So, and tonight we're talking about the Choffees site, but there's other sites that they've, they've been, you know, they've been looking at. And I think they're taking seriously the next few steps that the township undertakes any kind of redevelopment, which is really the lifeblood of the community, making sure that it stays vibrant. But parking and circulation is something that's, they're taking very seriously. So they're spending money and undertaking a separate study. So this project, if it moves forward beyond this area need, will definitely have coupled with it a, a study of this neighborhood as long as, as well as others and recommendations for how to take care of the traffic from the school, integrated into any traffic that may be generated from this site. And then a lot of times the developer is responsible for some of that fix. Sometimes the town initiates something, whether it be traffic patterns that they, they, you know, change traffic patterns, widen streets, put in traffic lights, put in traffic calming devices. So there's many, many different tactics to employ. But they, they're undertaking this right now so that by the time this comes forward or any other development that's not currently in front of us comes forward, that they'll have that to fall back on, that's relevant to the, to the current day situation. They had done something many years ago, but it's, it's become a little antiquated and some things have changed. So they're really, they want to do that. So this particular development will fall under that.
Gotcha. So we're guaranteed that at least this traffic report will happen prior to any type of-
Yeah. And, and I'm sure that that traffic report will be talked about in public and the public will be notified about it separately. So, and you'll have an opportunity to look at that. But it's going to be used as a tool so that each one of these developments that come forward, we look at that study and say, well, you're in a high, you're in a problem traffic area, problem parking area. What are you going to do to, to help take care of that? If you're adding more traffic, how are you going to remediate the current situation and make it better?
Yeah, so, but to answer my question, that'll be done before, like you're saying that that report will be used prior to planning to be improved for this, for this specific project?
Correct. So as Kristin indicated, this is just designated area need.
Right, right, right. But before we get to the planning side of getting approved-
That study, that study will be completed.
-you're telling them that this study will be guaranteed for that planning?
That's correct.
Okay. That's, I appreciate the answer. All right. And then, just here, so, okay, I mean, if that's the case, that answers kind of a couple of my questions. And then, I guess, who owns the project? Because, you know, coming to her previous comment, like, it was a loved restaurant in this area, so like, who's replacing, like, who's the ownership? Is that-
I don't remember the, well, some of the properties are township-owned.
Right, right, but development-wise, I mean-
I don't recall the name of the LLC that owns the other properties. I don't recall the name.
Okay. So we're, we're doing a study on a property without knowing who the-
No, we know who they are. I don't remember the name. It's like, you know, somebody LLC. It's not like a person that I know.
So it's, so, okay.
Is it in here?
Sorry, did I misread? Oh, sorry, I thought that was first. Okay, so as of right now, you don't remember what the LLC is, so we're just kind of voting on something, but we don't know who the developers are, as of right now. The town.
Your, your mic is not on.
Anything to clarify, I appreciate it.
It's very confusing.
Yeah.
Because the words say development, whether you say redevelopment or in need of redevelopment. People hear a development will occur, I believe. So that what, what Kristin has been making clear, and that's why the steps were offered, is that this, this designation tonight simply says, this cannot stay as it is. It is, in fact, in need of redevelopment for the reasons that she stated. There's criteria and she didn't make them up. And I don't think that anyone in the room would disagree with the fact that we can't leave it and will not leave it as it is. Do, is there a plan that has been put forward to put something there? Not at this time.
No plans have been submitted at this time?
No. I mean, we can't have a plan be submitted unless the area has been designated. I would just also add is that just because an area is designated in need of redevelopment, if a redevelopment plan never arises, then nothing happens. If a redevelopment plan never gets approved or never sees the light of day, nothing gets touched and it could get untouched for years and years and years, hypothetically. Hypothetically. Now, I just want to answer your question on the owner of the property. I do have the, I brought up the report.
Okay.
Seven, seven Union LLC. And from my understanding, they are the longtime owners of the Choffee property and acquire the other properties.
Yes.
Okay.
Except for the two that are township-owned.
Yes, the two, yeah, okay.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make, okay, so previous owners of Choffees are the ones developing the current area?
Yeah, yeah.
Or planning to.
Yeah.
Yes, correct, under the-
May.
Right, yeah, idea, possibly. Yeah, gotcha, okay. And, okay, I think, yeah, I mean, I guess we're just concerned with, you know, mostly lot six and seven, make sure that it's not kind of being disrupted. But, you know, understanding how, like, what's the kind of game plan with that area? Because, I mean, that is more of a, you know, kind of family-owned, you know, single home area. So like, how far are we developing past that? Like, you know, what's kind of the game plan? Is that whole circle going to be redeveloped? Is that kind of like an eye that you guys are going for?
What do you mean, the circle?
So like, you see where the little Y is, right? So we have the little circle in the middle that people drive around?
Other roundabout.
That whole area? So that's kind of where I was just curious at, like, what's, like, how far down are we going? Are we just going into all the neighborhoods and kind of replacing them in that area? Or is this like still a, a single-family home area that we can enjoy? Just because we have so many, you know?
I would, I would be surprised if Union would want to encroach on a single-family residential neighborhood. I will point out that the houses along Roosevelt, meaning the one that was torn down, the one that still looks pretty nice, and the school, those are all zoned for commercial. So although it feels like a residential district now, even if this weren't to happen, commercial uses could be built there.
Oh. How, like, not recent, like, it's always been that way? I thought it was a residential zone, no?
It's not. And I, I would have to look back to the-
I was just curious.
No, I mean, it's not, it's not super recent. I, there, I could go through a paper trail and find out when that changed, but it's not within the past few years.
Gotcha, okay.
But when you're looking off to, like, where you talk about the circle and then off to the left is residential, I mean, I guess I don't know what's in the minds of other people, but I would be very surprised if they were to tread on a residential zoned area.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, just like, you know, to make comment, but I completely appreciate it. I'm going to step back, but yeah, you know, we're just concerned, you know, that's all. Because we are seeing a lot of development happening with, you know, all the Centaurians and such.
Fair points.
But, okay, that's all I got. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doug Clark. I'm a prop owner at 901, Stuyvesant, the condo unit. I first have a question here. Lot six and seven, where is lot six and seven? Is that, are there, is that commercial or is that residential homes or?
There, lots six and seven are, if you can see it on the screen now, it's the two lots between the two areas that are encircled in yellow, and they're not part of the study.
So it's right, they're on Roosevelt Avenue, then?
Yep.
All right.
They're residential uses, but they are commercially zoned.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. My concern is the municipal parking lot at the end of the condo unit. Pulling out of there onto that Stuyvesant Avenue is, is a little risky if you're going out the other end. That, that parking lot should remain there for the fact of trying to pull out. I know, I was, I've always gone that way to, you know, make a left, either left or right turn, it's just easier, it's safer that way. But pulling out the other end, it's just not feasible. It's just too much of a safety risk. So that should be, can talk about, concerned about with that. That's, oh, the other thing is too, we have, he mentioned about the parking for the school district. I mean, a lot of times the people do park. We have the property at 901 and it's private property, but yet people come in and park there to pick up their kids, you know, which is neither here nor there, but it's just a thing to consider about that, too. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the public? Okay. Comments from the board? And now we're going to go back, comments to the public.
So just in, in response to some of the questions that have come from the public, to reiterate, whatever action this board may take tonight is just to designate the area in need of a study. But I can tell you that any future actions by this board are going to be governed by the same things that we've been concerned about by recent applications. And that is, traffic is an issue. We, we are all concerned about traffic. That's why the traffic study has been requested and we're anxiously going to await the findings of that study. I can also share, as a member of the Board of Education, I'm certainly not going to be willing to approve any, any application that's going to further exacerbate issues with traffic around Connecticut Farms School. I will say that our board, the Board of Education, has discussed some preliminary plans for future changes that might better control parent traffic on drop-off and pickup. But that will require some capital improvements on our part. We don't yet have the financing for that. So we're still looking at that. We're aware that those are issues and we want to try to improve those conditions around schools throughout town. That's not a relevant issue for this board, but it's information for the members of the public who are curious about it.
Thank you, Mr. Coman. Mrs. Perkins, do you? No? We'll, we'll do comments from the public. You could come up, you could come back up. Yes, you, yeah. The reason why is that minutes, minutes of this are, are taken and so we need it part of our, part of the record. It is a public record, so.
So this is Anita Shah again, 99 Roosevelt Avenue. Just wanted to know if we're going to get notices for each step of the study as we did this time?
Yes.
Because we put out there's three steps and then there's a traffic study. Are we going to be notified each step?
You will not, it kind of depends. At a minimum, the board and the governing body's agendas are published in the paper. And so I would keep my eye on those if I were you. The redevelopment plan does not have a notice mailed to individuals. The, if it gets to that stage. If it gets to stage three, the site plan, again, it depends. It would certainly be on any agenda that is published in the paper or posted at City Hall. If there was a variance, which means if they didn't meet all of the requirements that are in the new zoning that is written, then you would get something in the mail. But if they don't, then you wouldn't. So it's hard to say this early on.
And when you say the paper, which paper are you speaking?
Vince, what paper is this published in?
Star Ledger and Local Source.
All right, thank you. You're welcome.
You know, if I, if I could add a comment. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just going to add a comment and please feel free to come up. Certainly, I think whenever there is an idea to redevelop a property and propose a certain use and how it looks and what the use will be and the parking and everything like that, obviously proactive engagement with the neighborhood and the community, I think, are keys for, for success in fostering that collaborative relationship to ensure that concerns are being met ahead of time, rather than trying to push forward with a plan and then we're hitting all, all these issues because there wasn't a proactive approach. So I, I would always encourage when a redevelopment plan and as well as a site plan, that, that the public does get engaged and reached out to. So I just want to put that on the record. But, sir, go, go ahead.
Hey, I just wanted to say too, it's a little ironic that these buildings have gone up and now the next buildings are being torn, well, seem to be being torn down. Is, or was there a proposal from the builder for these properties? Because it seemed, it seemed, why, why did Choffees move? Why did they move? Were they asked to move? Oh, they want, okay. They were the one, okay. All right. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Ma'am.
Hi there. 980 Roosevelt again. I just want to say, make a comment that I was born and raised in this town. I love this town. I think this is the most convenient, well-located town in New Jersey. I think all of you, especially our street, 980 Roosevelt. I, I work in the city, getting on and off the bus. I can't explain to you. I've lived in Millburn, Springfield, and I came back to Union because this is my hometown. And it's really upsetting because Choffees, who was next to us for many, many years, who was part of my family, we got pizzas from there every single week, was quite aggressive in trying to take our property and the property next door to us. So finding out this, at this stage that we're, we're at, how we found out, the whole, the whole street, sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. The whole street feels that we've been slighted or there's inferior, you know, there's alternative motives behind that we're not seeing that you guys know and we don't know. Because we've known about this redevelopment for maybe two or three years now, because he has been aggressively, aggressively trying to buy our property. So we came here today because, one, we were quite concerned because we heard rumors that he was going to try to edammit domain, our property. So I just want to make it clear, not make it clear, I just want confirmation that there's nowhere in this plan that my property and my neighbors' properties are being considered for this redevelopment. I know that there is a, a comment that this property has always been a commercial use, but this has been my family home for 25 years.
Is your property the, one of the two in between?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So all of the concerns about the school, I went to Connecticut Farms, I went to Kwame, I went to Union High, I went to Keene. This is my town.
If I, could, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, please, please.
Ms. Ed, the intentions of the, of the study, when they do the study, it's either a condemnation or non-condemnation study. This is non-condemnation, okay? But you're not even included in it, right? So, so even if you weren't, it was non-condemnation, that means they'd have to negotiate with, there's no way we can condemn it or we'd have to redo the study. So there's no, no indication here that there would be any type of a condemnation. I think that that's one of the reasons why you were excluded. It was, it was indicated that, that you were not interested in being part of a redevelopment.
What I mean by excluded is half of us on the street didn't get the notice about this meeting today. Only one neighbor did. The neighbor then communicated with the whole town.
If I, if I could just speak to that a little bit, there's legal requirements for notice, which we make sure we follow. This board is not responsible for anything.
No, I'm not. I just, I just want to, if we're here for the open, I just want to say that that process needs to be a little bit more open and seemed, so now we're in phase one for phase two. My neighbor asked, how do we know what's going on? And, and the answer was, look in a newspaper. We're in 2025. That should have not been the answer for a town as progressive, as cool, as, like, that's not, that's not an okay answer. And maybe this board could help with putting things in place that would, you know, a, a quick link that, you know, steps one, steps two, here it is, due date and stuff like that.
So I just want to let everyone know that this board protects you, okay? Very much protects you. So when the proposal is made, I sit in the back room before this meeting and they say, I don't like this, and they really, they, they pour over these plans to make sure, because they're residents as well, they're volunteers and they're residents who live in these neighborhoods and don't want to have any kind of an impact, a negative impact to their community, as you feel the same way. So they very much protect you. As far as notice goes, we only can do what's legal, but at the same time, I think it's important that you make sure that- that you make sure that, you keep an eye out for what's going on. I mean, we're not going to hide anything from you. I know this governing body and a few members here are, want to be very transparent. This is a process. It's got to work for the neighborhood, it's got to work for the town, it's got to work for any future developer, you know. So if that, all those three things don't work, it's not going to happen. So it tends to be very collaborative. And sometimes, even as collaborative as it is, there have been situations where there have been starts and fits on some of these projects because things change. But I would say that the governing body that you have in place right now, at least what I've heard, is that they want to keep the public involved in these processes. So if you don't hear about it, call up the engineering department, call up the clerk's office and say, what's going on with this project? If there's anything going on, we'll tell you. Okay?
So those are my concerns. I just want to be updated and to know, because I love this town. And I do think that that area does need some squeezing up, but maybe not putting 75 one-bedroom apartments there. Because I don't know where you're going to fit 75 cars, plus their spouse, plus the friend coming over, plus the drop off. And I've lived in the apartments next door too. So like, I kind of have both hands. Do something nice, but don't, let's not go. No, but please, let's approve something that's, sorry, guys.
Yeah.
And what I would also say is that if this proceeds to step two with the redevelopment plan, I'll reiterate again, that should be a collaborative process where the community and the neighborhood should be reached out to, to have those concerns addressed. Because if it comes back to this board and it's not addressed, we're just going to simply toss it back to them. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Phil Levy. I'm a resident at 971 Roosevelt Avenue, across the street from the projected project. The elephant in the room is that there is going to be a development. There's going to be, most likely, a mixed use of residential with commercial, as we saw on the other side of Stuyvesant, from the other side of Roosevelt. Everybody knows it. We're here for that. There's two problems with this project. Problem number one is what we have right now, the municipal parking lot. Everybody knows and agree here that there is a problem with parking in the town. Why taking this into a redevelopment lot? Second, the lot that is adjacent to the school, we already know that on Roosevelt Avenue, that little tiny street, we have a huge problem of parking. Now we're taking an extra lot that is adjacent to the school and putting it into the redevelopment study, okay? It just, these two lots got to be excluded. If they want to be doing any development towards the Stuyvesant Street, as they did in Centurion, that's a beautiful thing. We're not opposing that. But I think going into a residential street that it's already very narrow and congested with the school in the morning, with the school in the afternoon, and so forth, and adding up another problem to the problem is going to be horrible for town. So you're taking one parking lot of the municipality and you're taking a house that is a two-family house, beautiful house, right next to that asphalt driveway that belongs to the town, and want to knock it down too. As they knock down the other house, which was livable and not in a lappedated condition, there were tenants living there, they rushed to buy it and knocked it down, okay? So the claim now that they should have left it like that because it wasn't livable is kind of away from the truth. So they did that, fine. They want to develop towards Stuyvesant. I think it's acceptable for the town. The town wants to see new people coming in and having a vibe. But going into that little street, taking a municipality parking lot that it's existing and helping people on Stuyvesant, as of you speaking, and adding up another problem to Roosevelt, which is existing problem already and becoming worse, I think that should be excluded from the redevelopment study. These two lots should be excluded. Everything else that's facing Stuyvesant, it's more than welcome for development. That's my opinion. And I hope the board will listen to that and will call this off, because right now you're giving her the authority to do the study for the redevelopment. We don't want no redevelopment over there. There's no need for study. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Yeah?
Yep.
So the, I'm a neighbor as well, like on Lot 6. So, oh, sorry. My name is Vasilio Salgas, and I'm one of the owners for Lot 6. And the, the way that the plan is laid out, well, one, kind of, not, not being very specific that you wanted to build multifamily homes there. I know that you established that it's not identified, but like, in the same way that my neighbors have been approached with the former owners of Gioffi, they're very aggressive in terms of their approach. They're very clear that they wanted to go and make, like, I don't know if it's luxury apartments or some, a mass of additional homes in that section. And the fact that they're looking at, in need of a redevelopment study for two different lots that separate Lot 6 and 7 there, it almost feels like down the line, they're trying to get this approval now. And then eventually, once they get, like, the development approved, they're going to go and try to approach on those two other properties. I can't see what something can be developed over next to the school there and, like, without having the other two lot, the other two properties with the rest of the lots that are separated there. So I've, do, if, since 6 and 7, Lot 6 and 7 are commercially zoned, would there be a way for them to possibly come back after development, if development is approved, for them to come and try to do some sort of eminent domain or like get, like, try to have an approval of sorts through the township of Union to kind of force that? That's my main concern. I'm trying to kind of...
Can I, Vince?
So the developer has no ability to do eminent domain, all right? So it would have to be the township that would do it. They would have to redo a study specifically for condemnation. I'm not sure that the, this community's ever done that before. I know that even in the downtown, it was resisted. They didn't want to do that, even in areas that would make a lot of sense to do a condemnation. They let the developer go out and either get the property or not get the property. You know, market forces took, you know, determined whether or not they were going to be, there were sellers or not. So I can't speak for what future governing bodies may do, all right? But I would tell you, I'd pay attention to it, but that would be something where you'd be notified, you'd have a chance to object to it. Typically, they end up in lawsuits that nobody wants, but, you know, I don't want to editorialize. What I would tell you is that the more area that you put into a study, typically, the more options that you have. Not every study winds up yielding something that makes sense. And if you don't have all three parties that agree, like I mentioned before, if the developer can't make money and the, and the town, you know, doesn't, doesn't find benefits to it, and the neighbors don't find benefit to it, it usually doesn't happen. You need all three to, you know, and not necessarily all in that order, but you need all three to agree, or it becomes a very lengthy, very cumbersome process, all right? It's a small redevelopment area. The problem that you're having, though, is a lot of these vacant stores are not being filled. So they need a little kick, a little something to get them further. That's what's being looked at here. So I think the next step in the process, a very important step, that you should all be in tune to. But, you know, future condemnation, I don't see it, but stay, you know, stay aware of what's going on and keep asking questions. I think that's the best way to be informed. And come and, you know, interface with this group, the Township Committee. As we go through the process, it'll, it'll become more interesting.
Got you. Right, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, no, please.
Sorry, so you mentioned something about, because the stores aren't fixed, sorry, Brian Scarpellini, I need you, just in case. You mentioned something, sorry, you mentioned something about the stores in the center of town are having issues getting non-vacant, right? So what does that have to do with this redevelopment? You said it'll help them somehow?
No. I was talking, I was indicating that even those areas, they did not employ condemnation, all right? So those were non-condemnation, even, even though those were more challenging in those areas. And it took many, many years for the, for the developer to purchase those properties. The town never stepped in and made them a condemnation. So they didn't mandate that they were sold, didn't call it a public purpose use. So they're two separate, I was just using that parallel, indicating, I think his concern was that, you know, at some point it would be, they'd be forced to, to give up their properties, or it would be, you know, more likely to be condemned. It's never happened, even years ago, when there was a push to do that and would have probably made sense to do some kind of condemnation. The Township Committee at that time and up to now has not employed that as a tactic to move forward.
Understood, thank you. And then, just one more question. So, you know, hypothetically, this gets approved. I understand there's two more steps, you know, planning stage and then, I forgot the third one, but there's, I know there's a third one. So what's like the, is this whole process just to get the plannings up and right? Or is there any benefits that are given by the town to the developers? Like, for example, I noticed on your last couple of minutes that every quarter you guys give Manny, the owner of Centauri, on $75,000 as like a redevelopment fund of some kind. I was just kind of curious, is that what this is about too?
After the first announcement, I know that the governing body has certain agreements, but that's not under the jurisdiction of the planning board for a specific type of financial agreements or anything of that nature.
Okay, got it. So this is just planning, like, no additional, like, this doesn't affect our taxes in that capacity, like you're giving funds away or anything like that?
No, we don't, we don't have that jurisdiction.
All right. Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you so much.
Yep. Any further comments from the public?
I mean, you would...
We'll need, we'll need you to come to the mic. Sorry.
Just so the people who are watching can hear you.
We want everyone to hear your voice, so.
Okay. Your name, please.
Hi. My name is Eva Halkes, and I'm the sister of John, who owns the house, the Lot 6. And it's been for some time now that he's been approached with aggressively and even sending, whoever it was, sending people over, you better accept it, or they're going to take the house from you. You know, so, I mean, I'm sure that other people went through that. Now, why do they keep those stores that they are great for rent and they keep them empty? Why are they knocking good houses down? Why? They want to forge the hands of somebody in, you know, taking over. The people that own the properties, that they have them for so many years, and the neighborhood that looks beautiful, residential, and the school, I mean, what are you going to do with the school? It's going to be approved or not, so? I mean, think about it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for your remarks.
We are not.
Anyone, anyone else from the public wishes to speak?
Is this viewable online somewhere after the fact?
Yes. Yeah. If you go on YouTube and just look up Union TV 34, you should see the channel, access it, and be able to see the live stream recording of this.
Is that what you, where?
YouTube. Just, just, just go on YouTube and search Union TV 34. Did I get that correct? Okay. Yeah. TV 34. Yeah. I just want to make sure if there's any other comments from the public. Yes, sir. If you can go, yeah, if you could go up, identify yourself.
My name is James Waim, and we've lived in the neighborhood for more than 20 years. And the moment we moved here is for the reason of downsizing. And this is a very nice neighborhood. And all of a sudden, the neighborhood changed tremendously. It's almost like, you know, it's a residential place, turned into almost the center of, you know, it's like a Times Square. So we are just wondering, every project always have a goal. What's the goal? I mean, something's moving. It's because the business, they're going to turn this place into a business town, you know, or as someone was pointing out, you know, a lot of empty house. There's some intention behind it. And we're wondering why, what's going on, which direction we're going. Nobody's really saying it to the public. And people are starting wondering and worried about it. If, you know, if something, you know, we thought this is like a retirement place, and turn out, if it's not, we better prepare for it. I'm not, I'm sure many people feel the same way. It's creating some kind of anxiety. You know, the beautiful library, I commenced somewhere, it's planned on. It's great. It's the money on the right direction for the new generation. But something else is happening. So I just have a question. What's going on? Where are we going? I think somewhere, there's a planning, but what's the plan? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments from the public? All right. Mr. Cohen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to address the, our neighbors that are here, members of the public, who have expressed lots of concerns. I want to make sure that you understand, whatever action we take tonight is to just approve the area in need of redevelopment study. There's no proposal before us, other than that. And I can tell you, I've been on this board now for almost two years, and when we hear from our neighbors about the impact of applications that are before us, we listen carefully. And I've acted accordingly in some instances, based upon what I've heard in testimony. Now, that testimony includes experts from applicants. It includes the experts that are employed by this board. And we take all of those things into account. But as was pointed out by Ms. Russell when she detailed the process, the next step is the critical step. Because whatever is described in the redevelopment study, should there be one? Because there's at least three votes that have to take place before a redevelopment study comes before us. Votes by this board and votes by the governing bodies. We will be scrutinizing the descriptions in that redevelopment plan. And I can tell you, for my part, I will bear in mind some of the comments that have been made tonight as that redevelopment plan is brought before us. But I, I'd just like to ask that some of the skepticism that you've expressed be held at abeyance, because we need to see what is going to be proposed before us. The concerns about property owners that want to remain where they are, are real. And yet, as has been stated before, the actions of other individuals are not the purview of this board. There's nothing that we can do about the behavior of other people. We can only act on the applications and the, the actions that legally come before us, and we do so with your interest in mind, because that's what we're charged to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. So you, yeah, yeah, go ahead. So you, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Brian Scarpellini, 980, sorry again. Appreciate the comment, we definitely will take in mind, but also keep in mind that the reason why we're skeptical is because of the aggressiveness of the developer and the way that they've been treated. So, while I agree with you to the extent that, yes, let's give them a shot to, you know, anybody who's coming in to try to make the town better, if they've already given these people so much process and problems, then by our eyes, we shouldn't have this developer working on these. Like, there are many developers, right? Centurion and all the other ones? So what we're basically saying is, from our experience, while we understand where you're coming from, our experience has been that this developer is very aggressive, is doing all tactics to be able to get these properties in their hands, and, you know, you're kind of asking us like, "Yeah, listen, they were kinda pricks before, but let's give them a shot now." Like, none of us wanna do that. So, yes, we'll definitely take you into consideration, but please take us as well. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. All right, hearing no other further comments, Mrs. Perkins?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to remand this study to the township committee, and to caution and offer the most significant of these comments to be listened to and to be considered as the township committee deliberates and accepts this area in need of redevelopment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen. No further comments from the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frain?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes, with the very clear assurance that the township committee will be aware of the remarks of this evening. Yes.
Mayor Bowser?
Yes.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Chairman Lay?
Yes. And I'll just reiterate again, if this proceeds to a redevelopment plan, the neighborhood should be consulted in advance, period. And if not, there will be issues. So, um... Ms. Russell, you have a second presentation?
I do.
Right, okay. Not in area of redevelopment.
So, my second presentation before you this evening are just some code updates. I think the last time, actually, I know, the last time that I came before you with code updates was just about a year ago, this month. And so what I will be presenting to you this evening is kind of a whole bunch of housekeeping revisions that have accumulated over that past year. They've come from a few different sources, from administration, from the zoning officer, who's kind of pointed out some language in the code, or some, some regulations that make his life difficult, and that he was asking for clarification on, and just things that came up along the way over the course of planning and engineering that we realized needed to be adjusted. I've, I've kind of bundled these in terms of the section, the part of the code that they fall in. The first part is several amendments to definitions, adding definitions for deck, food truck, patio, and salon. Salon used to be spa, we changed that for clarification based on some concerns that were expressed. These definitions should just make some enforcement issues easier and provide clarity as people are asking for a variety of uses. Then we move into the zoning section of the code. I'll just read through these for you. Clarification that garages partially below grade count as a story, that garages may not be expanded in front of residential passages other than at the garage, regulations for pool decks, including their location, height, and setbacks, parking standards for automobile sales uses, clarification for signage regulations, as well as explaining that the signs, sign permits expire after those signs are removed or replaced, regulations for outdoor storage of vehicle inventory, a statement that salons must have a health license, and a requirement that salons have a separation distance township-wide. There seemed to be some concern that they were clustering and that there were just too many in one place, and so that's an attempt to deal with that. Places of assembly in DC, DT, and NC zones have been reclassified as conditional uses, so they are still permitted in those zones, but with additional requirements that need to be met, and increasing light vehicle size from seven feet to eight feet to match existing van types, and that really relates to the regulations around parking commercial vehicles on residential properties. The bulk table that exists, we have implemented several recommendations from the reexamination that this board adopted earlier this year. That included reducing the maximum building height to twenty-seven feet, changing front yard setbacks. More or less what it says is if there's a consistent setback on your block, you need to match that. Rather than having a, a set number, it's better to align with what, what the, what the street standard is. That also for NC, we adjusted accessory setbacks for consistency, same with building and lot coverage, and a statement that pre-existing undersized lots at the date of this adoption shall be considered conforming. The use schedule of limitations also had that related reclassification of places of assembly as conditional uses in NC, DT, and DC. And last but not least, this map change, so your zoning map will be updated, changing the area along Chestnut Street, Tucker, Sinclair, Carolyn, and Mercer Avenue, this was all part of your last master plan reexamination, changing that from NC to RA. I can go into any of those in more detail if you have specific questions, but that is an overview of the changes that we are looking at modifying.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I do have a question. Actually, it's this slide here, bullet point number two and, and three. In practice, how, if an application is put forth and they have to calculate a setback, in a practical measure, how is that done? Do they basically take an average, or do they take the mode, or?
Well, so, it says the, the prominent, so it would be the most frequently occurring. And when a person, when a developer, a property owner, or whatever submits a site plan, how I have seen it done in the past, is that site plan shows the extent of the block, it might not have all the details, but it will show where that front wall of each of the houses is, and that dimension, and it, and we would be able to see what the most frequently occurring is. Now, if there was some aberration where their two neighbors on either side were significantly different than the most frequently occurring, I think that would be a decent argument for a C variance, but for the sake of establishing some regulation, it will be the most frequently occurring.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Perkins?
Yeah, of course. Ms. Russell, are there any obvious exceptions to that? I do, I do believe there was a concern relative to one of the group homes, and the design was purposefully set back further than others so that parking for large vehicles and transports could occur. Would that kind of thing still be allowable?
Well, so, there is not an exception built into this, but I think that what you've described is the reason that we have C variances, and I know that sometimes that's a frustration for developers, but I think that this board tends to be pretty reasonable about that, and an explanation that, you know, this use is, you know, such and such, and our needs are this, then you would, you would need to weigh that reasonably.
I just wanna be sure it's still allowable for the C.
Oh, of course, yes.
I just have one more question. In the proposed tract changes, I did notice a section about parking of trucks and other vehicles in residential zone districts, and it was in highlight that, I'll just read it out here, only one currently registered operational, commercial, or non-commercial light vehicle not exceeding what used to be seven?
Yeah, so that, the only lang, that language exists, the only thing that's changing is that number.
The number from seven to eight?
Yeah, because apparently that type of vehicle in today's day and age is just a little bit taller than it used to be.
Okay, so it's just basically matching of what, what is conventional and what is common for those type of vehicles now?
Precisely, yes. We, it was, it was a little bit unfair to punish these vehicle owners just because whoever Ford is making a slightly taller vehicle now than they did fifteen years ago.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Questions from the public? Hearing none. Comments from the board? Comments from the public? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to remand this back to the township committee for final adoption?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Frain. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frain?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Bowser?
Yes.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Chairman Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up for new business, we have what was carried over from the last meeting, application twenty-two-five-dash-eleven amended, American Landmark. Mr. Hale?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Hale, representing the applicant, American Landmark. And, yes, at the last hearing, we had completed our presentation to the board, and we're hoping that the board will move forward with the approval of the project. I hear that the board is not inclined at this time to move forward with the approval. The board wishes to carry the application, it's their prerogative, but my client has commenced construction on the approved Phase Four, in accordance with the previous approvals from the board, so.
Mr. Janave, you would just wanna add anything further?
Yeah, it is, it is the recommendation that we do not move forward at this time, that we do continue this application till December, so we have a little bit more time to, to handle some issues that have been, we're trying, been trying to work out, namely, there's some issues with naming redevelopers and tying this to, to Phase Six plan through some conditions, as well as some of the parking issues that we're trying to, trying to wrap our head around. So I think another month would be, would be advantageous for everyone.
So I think that, can I get a motion to carry this over to the next meeting without further notice?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Khan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frain?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Bowser?
Yes.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Chairman Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll advise my client.
Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you.
We'll go now to the next application, twenty-two-five-dash-fourteen, Diana Yun. Can the representative approach?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Trevor Endler from Jabber Ban Wurgat, on behalf of the applicant, Diana Yun. Just briefly to go over the application, it is for preliminary and final major site plan with existing non-conforming bulk C variances. None of the condition, none of the project will exacerbate any of those conditions that exist currently. The property is located at twenty-one-seventeen Springfield Avenue, also known as Block five-seven-zero-two, Lot Three. Currently, the property is a one-story building that hosts, that holds a restaurant, and the applicant is proposing that to renovate that one-story building and add a second-story addition to add a three-bedroom apartment on the second floor to make it a mixed-use building. The variances that exist and are not being exacerbated are minimum lot area, where twelve-thousand-five-hundred square feet is required, three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet exist, minimum lot width is a hundred-and-twenty-five feet required, thirty-seven-point-five feet existing, and maximum building coverage fifty percent permitted, and sixty-three-point-three-six existing and proposed. With that, I would like to bring up our architect, Ali Qureshi.
Can we swear in the architect?
Yes, sir, will you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Qureshi, can you just walk the board through your qualifications as an architect?
Sure. My name is Ali Qureshi, and I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in architecture, and I've been a licensed architect since nineteen ninety-six.
Speak into the mic, yeah.
I've been a licensed architect since nineteen ninety-six, and my license is in good standing.
The board stipulates.
Mr. Qureshi, could you just walk the, the board through what the applicant is proposing here?
Sure. Currently, there are two buildings on this side. In the front is a restaurant, which is around seventeen-hundred-and-forty-four square feet. And on the back side, there is a single-family dwelling, also one-story, which is roughly five-hundred-and-sixty-seven square feet. So, in the front building, which is a restaurant right now, will be divided into two spaces. One will be the restaurant, eleven-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet, and a small portion will be an office, which will be four-hundred-and-sixty square feet. So the size of the building will remain the way it is, and the, the major part we are adding is the second floor on top of this front building, and it's gonna be a three-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment. And this second-floor addition will be setback to comply with the setbacks from front and side yards, even though the current building is non-compliant, but we are making the, the addition compliant.
Can you just walk the board so I can see, can you walk them through the, we'll call it a site plan, that was previously provided to the board?
So as you can see, this is the front building, and this is a restaurant right now. It will be completely renovated, and on the back is a single-family dwelling, very small, one-bedroom. And the second floor will be added on top of this restaurant building, which will, which will be a restaurant and an office now, and we are adding this residential on top of it, so it will be a mixed-use.
Okay, and just for clarification, no changes are being made to the exterior or the foundation of the building, correct?
Yes.
And, Mr. Qureshi, have you received the review letter from Colliers Engineering dated July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five?
Yes.
Do you have any issues complying with any of the conditions or comments created in that letter?
No.
I have no further questions at this time. Questions from the board?
I have a question. The apartment on the, there's an apartment in the back of the building. Is that apartment being renovated or no?
They're going to keep it as it is.
Okay, so and then just one apartment upstairs?
Yes. That would be new.
Any further questions from the board?
Sir, how how will the increase of the size of this building affect parking?
Well, actually, the owner is going to discuss the parking issue. There is currently no parking on the site, and we are just adding one apartment. So it will definitely, the parking requirement will increase. But since this site doesn't have any parking, the owner has some ideas how to tackle that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can also just to clarify, we have a report that we'll address when when the applicant is up. But the existing restaurant is there, and there is no parking currently on-site. The addition is one three-bedroom apartment, so it's one effective unit. And the will show you that there is sufficient parking currently on-site, and there's no increase in, there's no large increase in the parking demand that will be requested for this project.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, could you go back to the the other plate that showed the the top down? Yeah, so to the left of the property, it indicates adjoining asphalt. Is that a driveway?
This is the adjoining property you're talking about?
Oh, it's not part of this property?
No, it's not.
Got it. So what is that used for by the other property owner? Okay, and and one last question. The area between the existing restaurant and the current dwelling in the back, is that an open area?
Yes, it is.
And it will remain open?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you.
And then to the right of the building, there's property there. Is that property owned by the owner of this building or no?
No. We are just the the thick black line.
Just the building.
Just the building. Yeah, that's that the the reason for the variances is because the current building is set up pretty much right on the setback line or on the property lines. So that's why we're, the addition is smaller than the existing building. But yeah, the property is just that thin rectangle that you can see up there.
Any further questions from the board?
Yes, I believe that this design then was commented upon by our fire department, your architectural design. Are you aware of that? And have you, are you able to address any of their concerns and remarks?
Well, I don't have that.
Can I see that? Because I'm not sure that I've seen that.
It specifies what must be built and considered within the architectural plan, I believe. It's a safety document.
Because I don't believe we've seen this document before.
If you haven't seen a document, then you can't verify whether or not it can be done or not.
Correct, yeah, I I have not seen this document.
You certainly may, but I don't expect you to make definitive remarks on it until you revisit your design plan.
We should be able to actually address all these issues during the permit process, like fire separation.
Thank you. I'll take it back. Perhaps I've made an error. Springfield, I gave him everyone.
Okay, any further questions from the board?
There's a giant billboard right next to that building. Is that, is, how is that going to impact the the redevelopment? Or will it?
We'll we'll have the applicant address that when she comes up.
Okay.
I I think to touch upon the committee woman, would would maybe as a follow-up, would that billboard be potentially obstructing like a window or a view from the apartment or something to that nature? Yeah, we can have you come up. We just need to swear you in as well, so. We'll just, we'll need you to come to the mic, swear you in and and.
You can go to this one.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's let's swear you in first.
Yeah, can we swear you in first? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, please, please.
So it will have some obstruction to the windows that's that's on the second floor. But however, the the second floor will be pushed back to, I believe, five feet from the property line. So so it's not like the billboard is going to be like right in front of the window.
Okay.
There is a fair amount of space.
Okay, all right.
You can imagine that.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Sir, by code, do you need a fire escape for that addition?
No, not for the second floor.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from the public? Okay, I don't think we have any further questions for the architect, thank you.
At this time, I would like to bring the applicant, Diana Yun, forward so we can discuss sort of the the operations of the site and her investment in the Vauxhall community.
Okay.
Good evening. I would like to begin by saying that I'm not a real estate developer. I'm just a senior citizen. I'm a local business owner. I do have a business in Vauxhall for the last eleven years. So I do know the neighborhood pretty well. You know, being there that long, I know all the neighbors, all the other business owners. And so I do have a good understanding of this neighborhood. I bought this property about a year ago that I saw on Realtors.com. So this is my first and only investment property. And the reason that I bought this property is because I need income for my disabled child. And in order to have lifetime income for him, I will need to do some modification to this property. So I do need to have another unit of income. And I only, I'm only adding one more apartment because basically that's all I could afford. I can't go into a lot of debt. So I just want to say that this isn't, this project is not wealth-building. I'm just a regular person that has regular problems that I am trying to resolve. So with that said, I understand parking is an issue for, as I'm listening to the other projects. One thing about the Springfield Avenue is that it's a county road, so there's heavy traffic. But of this stretch of Springfield Avenue, there really isn't that many stores or any too many residential properties. So in terms of parking, there's a lot of street parking. On the side of, I did a little before. And I just kind of walked where there's actual businesses and where there's a residential unit. So where the site is, there are basically four spaces on that block. The on the right of the site, well, right next door, we have a women's store. And there's foot traffic, but the cars never seem to stay long. It's convenience store, they stop cigarettes, a lottery ticket, cup of coffee, and they're gone. The average parking time is like maybe five minutes at that. And then the unit next to them is a electrical company, so they have no foot traffic whatsoever. And they have their own parking area for their employees. And to the left of the building is a parking lot being used by a landscaper. So there's no real building there. They they just park their trucks there, and they do have garage space. So on that particular block, there's really very little foot traffic. It's really a convenience store and the restaurant right now. And the restaurant is more of a takeout restaurant. Again, nobody really stays that long. It's just time for them to park their car, get their food, and then they're gone. Now, on the other side of Springfield Avenue, which is across the street, to the left, there are two businesses there. It's a, one is an adult dance studio. They don't really get a lot of foot traffic either. It's it's adult, so if they have classes, it's most of the time is, you know, after six o'clock. And then next to them is a women's boutique. They don't really get a lot of foot traffic there neither. And on that block, there are five parking spaces. Because next to them is just an empty lot right now. On the directly right, that corner is also a vacant lot. There's no building there, so there's a lot of available parking there in that corner. And next to them is a single-family home, and they have parking in the back of their house. And I would say that that block, you have at least seven available parking spaces. I mean, it goes all the way down to to the end of the block. But but as you know, people won't really go that far to park. So I would say, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with the extra. I'm guessing that for one apartment, I think the most cars they will have is two. If that, with the price of cars these days, I don't know how anybody can afford more than two. So I'm really thinking that additional apartment really is just going to add two more parking, street parking spaces. Now, in addition to that, there's also additional parking down Tower, which is to the left of the block. And if you go down another block to the right, there's actually a municipal parking lot there, and that has, I believe, like twenty-six parking spaces. And that's down the block. And I also took some pictures of of the parking situation, different times and different dates. So the photos on top is the actual site. So you could see there is, you know, there's spaces available at different times of the day and different days of the week. The one, the pictures in the middle, that's across the street to the left, and that has the dance studio and the women's boutique. And as you could see, the the empty lot provides a lot of empty spaces. And the bottom is the building that's diagonally right, and that also is a vacant lot, and that provides a lot of vacant property parking spaces as well. So during the day, this doesn't really seem to be a problem, and I even took pictures at night, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, and it's pretty empty by that time.
And Ms. Yun, just for clarification, the intent for this project is the current restaurant that is on property is the same restaurant that you intend to keep on the property if this project were to be approved, correct?
Yes.
Is there a tenant in the in that first-floor apartment?
In the back of the property? Yes.
There's a tenant. And where does that tenant park?
Street, street parking.
What street? Do you know?
Well, it's the same, either they park in front of the the restaurants, or they park across the street, or they park down Tower. So the pictures that I took includes them parking, and they do have one hall. So that apartment is going to, you know, if you're assuming that they're going to take up two spaces, I still feel that there's plenty of street parking available for the extra two cars that this project is going to bring.
Just one housekeeping thing I forgot. This report was previously provided to the board, but just to be clear, we can make this Exhibit A one, a parking report of the surrounding area. And then again, same thing, the tenants that are in the apartment behind the building are the same tenants that you intend to keep since there's no renovations happening to that apartment, correct?
Correct.
And in one of the reviews, there was a comment made about the intensity of the plumbing and the utilities. Based on your experience with owning the the building, do you anticipate any issues with the plumbing by adding this second-floor apartment?
No. The plumbing, as far as I know, is in working order, and there's no issues. And when I bought this building, February twenty twenty-four, I did have a building inspector perform a sewer scope, and it was, and he said the sewer lines were all clear.
I have no further questions at this time.
Questions from the board?
So this was probably a question for the architect, but I'll ask you. How are people going to get into and out of the apartment? Where will the entrance be?
Oh, in the front.
In the front?
On Springfield Avenue, next to the restaurant.
I'm going to bring up the site plan again to show you how the first-floor layout works. So you got that that stairwell right there that is being circled is the entrance to the apartment unit?
Right, so to the left of that staircase is the entrance to the restaurant?
Correct.
Yes.
So you're going to basically be carving out a stairwell in the current footprint of the restaurant?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Janave?
Mr. Chairman, can I? A question.
Yes.
Ms. Yun, the the current one, the apartment in the back of the restaurant, is that a restaurant employee?
No.
It's not. This, the single-family dwelling that's behind this, is that restaurant employees? Is is another building behind this building? Not not subject to this application, but it's on the same property?
For for clarification, there's, your original question was whether the second-floor unit would get, was going to be?
No, no.
There's the, there's the single-story apartment building in the back of the property?
Okay, that's that's what you're talking about. That's the rental?
Correct.
That's not, that is not a, an employee there?
No.
No.
Okay. And they, and you feel comfortable, they're, they park on the street right now?
Yes.
Overnight and everything?
When?
Yes.
When the the business, how many, how many employees are there in the business?
The restaurant?
Yeah.
I don't know, they're my tenants.
Well, just, you have any idea, three, four, five?
Uh, I would say maybe four.
Four?
Yeah.
And they don't have any issue finding parking?
None that I know of.
Do you know where they park?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But again, if you look at the photos that I took.
Yeah, no.
This is during the day, when they're there. Six o'clock, they're there, and you still see there's empty spaces available.
Okay, I mean, you've heard, you heard before this, the residents come out about parking. One of the concerns that this board always has on all the applications is that there's adequate parking. One of the concerns that this board always has on all the applications is that there's adequate parking before they allow a new, a new use to go in. So, I mean, it's helpful that we had the pictures. But how, when you, when you add this apartment, you should have at least two spaces. I think residential site improvements say 2.1 spaces for any new, for a three-bedroom apartment. So how do, how does the board get comfortable with the fact that you have those additional spaces? As you're, you're saying, there's no agreements with anyone, it's just you're relying upon on-street parking. Is that correct?
Yes.
So before, can I just respond quickly? Just with a review of the ordinance that is here, there is actually no parking requirement required for this neighborhood. So technically, it's not a variance that we're asking for. We understand the town's concern about parking, and we take that very seriously, which is why we went out and did the parking report to check to see if there would be available parking for adding the new three-bedroom apartment. But under the ordinance, there's actually no requirement for parking in the DT zone.
Understood.
But there's also two things that I'd like to point out. There's a, the bus line that goes down Springfield Avenue. So some of the employees from the businesses on Springfield Avenue, they do actually take the bus. So to answer your question, I think some of the employees may, that's how they commute. And down the street is also BuyWise Auto Parts. A lot of their employees also take the bus because it is very inconvenient. The bus is like literally, you know, down at the corner. So, you know, so I think, you know, that's one way people can get to work without a car.
BuyWise also has a parking lot there.
She said the BuyWise has a parking lot?
Not enough for all the employees. So their employees, they park on the street, they park in the municipal lot. But they are a little bit further down from this immediate area. And the second thing that I like to mention is that, that single family that's next to the, to the corner there with the empty lot, that's actually Jack Schultz's house. I don't know if you know Jack Schultz. Michelle and Jack?
Yes.
With the six kids?
Yes.
And if you know Jack, if parking would be a problem, he would be here right now, sitting in the front. So when I saw him a few weeks ago, he said, I got your letter, I know you're doing it. I said, yes. He said, Jack says to me, whatever you need, Diana, you let me know. And I thanked him. So I'm just saying this because if parking was an issue, I mean, he would be here. You know, I, I think, I think people know that it's really not that, you know, that big of an issue. I mean, yes, I understand Springfield Avenue, County Road, a lot of traffic. But the businesses that we have here in this immediate area really doesn't draw, you know, that much of a need of parking spaces.
So are you saying he agreed to allow you to use his parking spaces, his, his property?
No, he doesn't seem to be too concerned about a lack of parking spaces.
Well, he.
If, if, if there, if it would help the board, we can look into working on a shared parking agreement with the neighboring property owners or business owners, or even the municipal lot that's around the corner as a condition of approval.
Okay. I just have one quick question, citing your, your Exhibit A1 with the radius showing the, the on-street parking. I just want to confirm, are there any signs on that street of Springfield Ave that restricts any parking, overnight parking?
No.
Okay.
No restriction.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the board?
I would ask if you would entertain coming to the board with some sort of an arrangement that would make us much more comfortable.
That, that would be a condition of approval that we would need to, in order to get final resolution compliance, we would have to provide the board with a parking arrangement. It would be a, that's, I'm requesting that it be a condition rather than having to reappear just to hash out a parking agreement. That's gonna be a contract. Then it, it's a condition. If the condition isn't met, then the, the resolution is not finalized.
And how many spaces would you require?
How many spaces would they require?
I'm sorry?
For a three-bedroom apartment?
Yeah, so, so in typical, Travis is right, there's no, there's no specific requirement, but it would be, it would be 2.1 or round up to three, three is a requirement. You know? So I, I think that some kind of a shared or, or some kind of a parking arrangement, or even, you know, looking at municipal parking being, being an option, that would be, that'd be great if you could find something like that or, or at least inquire about that.
Yeah, no, we definitely will inquire about it. But yeah, just also to reiterate again, under the town's ordinance, there is no parking requirement. We understand that parking is an issue in town. We are fully cognizant of that issue. But the pictures provided demonstrate that as the site exists currently, there is ample parking on the street. And the only addition to this is the three-bedroom apartment, which even with the RSIS rounding up to three, that the pictures show that there's clearly at least three parking spaces available across three or four days and three or four times of day and night. So that would just be my only pushback is that there is no actual requirement. So we're not actually requesting a variance for parking. We understand the concern and take that seriously, but just want to reiterate again that there is no parking requirement for this property or for either of the uses that exist currently on the site or are being proposed.
Any further questions? Questions from the public? Hearing none, comments from the board? Yes, Mr. Cohen?
So as, as some of the members of the public who are present or watching at home know, I, I'm always concerned about parking. But based upon the testimony that I've heard, I'm satisfied that there is adequate on-street parking available for this particular application.
I, I would prefer to see in some type of agreement. I think that should be a condition, if, if you're able to get an agreement for parking. Just because it's a tenant and Springfield Avenue is just, you know, there's tractor trailers up and down Springfield Avenue all the time. You know, I just feel like if, if I'm a tenant, I would rather not park there on Springfield Avenue. And I, and I know as the owner, you said you, you've owned a business in Vaatol for 11 years and you feel like you know the neighborhood. I've lived in Vaatol a lot longer than 11 years. So I know the neighborhood very well also. I know the congestion on Springfield Avenue. And I would just, I would just be more comfortable if there was a condition with regard to parking for that tenant. And, and quite frankly, the other tenant as well. If that tenant is parking on the street, I mean, do it all at once if we could, if you could. I would agree, Mr. Terrell, and I believe that one of the things that surely you'll take into consideration when you begin to work with others, perhaps to get, make an arrangement, agreement, is the practicality of it. You know, so people are going to have to carry their groceries, bring their personal items and so forth, from wherever you arrange to allow them to park. From wherever the arrangement is that you are able to put together, to then use the staircase safely, transport their goods, transport themselves in, in other situations so that, practical, so that you get a tenant that's happy and doesn't give you a hard time and can actually live there in comfort.
No, we will, we will certainly look into.
Because there's nothing for the restaurant, there's nothing for this apartment.
Understood. But we, we will certainly look into working with the municipality, specifically because of the municipal lot that is nearby. And that would be the best off-street parking, since as discussed, there's not a lot of off-street parking in the area. It's all, the parking in the area is on-street parking. So that would be the next safest space, would be the municipal parking lot. So we'll, we'll certainly reach out and can work with the municipality to figure out something.
Or an arrangement with one, and I don't know if this is possible, an arrangement with one of the other businesses that, that's there. You know, I know the dry cleaners is there, I don't know if that's the business that you own, but there's a huge lot there. And then the family that you mentioned that lived across the street, that's a huge lot. Maybe you could make an arrangement with them. Just a suggestion.
I'm not sure, Mr. Denave, I know they cited shared parking with the municipality. I'm not sure if you have any additional thoughts to that or any further advisement on your end.
I, I think, listen, we're, we're in a little bit of, you know, uncharted territory. I know we're, we're trying as a board to, to legislate this parking issue a little bit. I think that, given the testimony that there's some on-street parking available, I think a condition would still be, would be prudent to have, to say, especially in the event there's some kind of an issue, that there, they should be required to do at a minimum municipal parking lot parking, or seek municipal parking, even if it's a little bit further away, given the opportunity to find it. I mean, it's gonna be Mrs. Yun's issue, trying to rent a place with no parking. But I do believe that we're, we should be looking to pinpoint where the, where the folks park when we're doing something new. And I, and I know what the ordinance says. But if we could, if, if the applicant's amenable to a condition that explores the possibility of shared parking and in, and in the instance of a problem, you'll be required to, to use a municipal lot, I think that would be something that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that condition is not an issue.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the application with the language of the conditions just put forth by Mr. Denave?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Frain. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frain?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Bowser?
Yes.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
As long as we make the condition is met.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Application 2025-17700 Liberty Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Member.
Good evening.
Steve Hale, representing the applicant, 700 Liberty Ave LLC. Pleasure to be here and thank you for staying to hear this exciting redevelopment application. Just by way of background, yeah, this is essentially retrofitting this building to a permitted use consistent with the redevelopment plan that was adopted with the input from this board as part of the Liberty Avenue redevelopment plan. And just again, a little bit by the background, I'm sure the board is well familiar with this property. For years, it was Breeze Eastern and then became part of the, part of development of Bed Bath Beyond. And actually was also part of, if you recall, Breeze used to own that whole back where Waterton Ridge was. And we were before this board many years ago. And there was a subdivision allowing the roadway back to Waterton, the Waterton Ridge project and then development of that adult community behind. So what we're looking to do now, while it's a, Serge, our client, will explain in more detail, the, it is look, and we'll explain, there'll be operational testimony, but basically to make this company called Crossroad Blends, which is a, I don't want to use the phrase, sister of Calustians. Now, up the street, Calustians has been a fixture in Union for many years. Again, not to sound old, but if you remember, it was Griffith Labs years ago. And, and then became, was acquired by Calustians. This is a little different. Calustians does basically manufacturing, spice grinding. And I was before, I think, the Board of Adjustment many years ago, where they introduced a liquid nitrogen tank in the front so they could do cryogenic grinding to actually freeze. And it, it grinds the spices better when they're, when they're frozen. And so it's great to have an existing business in the community, make a further investment in the township of Union. So enough from me. What I'd like to do is Serge is here, you can patiently wait and come on up to the mic. Serge Karakas from, well, the applicant owner of the property. And they did purchase the property from the defunct Bed Bath and Beyond. So why don't we, you're gonna be sworn in and give a little history.
Sir, will you raise your hand right here? Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Hello, everyone. My name is Serge Karakas. I'm the owner of Crossroads and Calustian. I just want to give some context to start off of what we do. So I'm, I'm gonna give context of what we do at Crossroads and then Calustian because I don't want to conflate the two as, as the same operation. So what we do at Crossroads is we take food ingredients, so it's usually raw dried powders, whether it be salt, flour, spices, or flavors. We mix them together to make seasonings. These, these products are mixed in big barrel blenders. So it's basically a barrel with a mixer inside. So we put the ingredients in, which is our raw material, like the salt and flour. We mix it and then we pack them in 50-pound, 30-pound boxes, bags. And we palletize them and we sell them to our industrial customers as bulk product. So in essence, the, the nature of the operation is, has no sound, it has no smell. It doesn't disrupt or emit any sort of, anything toxic. Everything we use is food grade. We currently do operate at 1835 Burnett Avenue. So we lease a building there, about 35,000 square feet. We've been there for about 12 years or so. And we haven't had a single complaint. We haven't had anyone come and complain about any smell or, or sound or traffic. The, the nature of our business is very industrial. We don't do retail or anything. So we have large, the, we have 53-foot trailers that show up, pick up a bunch of product a few times a day and then leave. There isn't a continuous traffic, we're not a distributor of any sort. So there's some truck traffic, which is under, under two double-digit number per day. And in terms of people traffic, we currently have about 30 employees at Crossroads. And we do not get visitors, which is like people that are coming in and out of the property because we don't sell to the public, we sell to industrial companies. Now, our plan is to move this operation to 700 Liberty, to a building that we now own. And the plan, I'm gonna let my team talk about the technicalities, but from a quick overview, our plan is to raise the, the ceiling to an operable height where we can blend our spices better because we do need some height. Currently, the building is a little low for that. And we certainly will not be using the, the entire space because we are only a small company. But what, and then I'll, I'll talk about what we do at Calustian, which is the spice factory. What we do there is we take spices, just straight spices, and we grind, we mill, we clean the product. So that operation is about taking ingredients, grinding them. And that is an, a, a business that does emit odor because we're naturally grinding the product. And that creates heat, the volatile oils have smell, so it does create odor. But Crossroads does not have any odor. We've not, we're, we don't like to think of ourselves as a factory, we're light assembly. We're essentially taking dry ingredients, mixing, packing, and then shipping them out. And let me see if I missed any points here.
Would just briefly, your hours of operation?
Our hours of operation, Monday to Friday, we operate from eight to five. So we do not operate on weekends. We, in fact, at 700 Liberty, what we plan on doing is putting gates in place to not allow any entry on the weekends because we do, we do realize from Calustian that truckers do like to loiter and they like to park on the sides of the streets. And we have certain people on the weekends coming and parking their car in the parking lot. We don't want to cause. We don't want to cause any disruption to the neighbors on the weekends, so we will be gating off the property on the weekends, but as well as after 5:00 p.m. So there is no truck traffic after 5:00 p.m. In fact, there is no trucks that wait overnight after 5:00 p.m. We do not want to allow that. We don't want the trucks to be idling there with the neighbors around. So is there any points I missed, Steve? That's sort of the overview of our business. It's not, it's completely disconnected from Calustian. It has its own staff, it has its own management. I'm the owner of both of them with my family, but there will be no intermingling between the operations. So the, any of the sounds or smells that Calustian may generate, Crossroads will not. And we expect under double-digit trucks per day. Again, we have 30 employees, so in comparison to, my team's going to explain more into that, but in comparison to the operation that was there, we are a very small business operating a large building, essentially. And there will be also no long-term storage, no truck parking. We don't have a fleet of trucks that will be sitting in our parking lot. We have a single trailer for our own use, so we can, we won't expect any sort of, the sound of moving trucks and parking trucks throughout the period of after 5:00 p.m. or during the day. So the entry and the exit of the trucking also will be minimal sound, because we don't have a queue of trucks waiting, because we have such few trucks per day. So the trucks will be in, they will get loaded up, and they will go out with minimal congestion. So.
And also, you've had an opportunity to review, and I know we did in our preparation, the September 10th, 2025 letter from Colliers, thank you, Vince, and Charles van Esia. Any problem complying with any of those terms and conditions?
No.
Okay. And I know that your engineer and architect will touch on that in more detail. So no further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman?
Questions from the board? Mr. Cohen?
Just one question. Given the fact that, as you testified, the building is larger than your current needs, do you anticipate any potential expansion over the future if your business thrives?
We don't plan on adding any sort of different products or different offerings to cause a large expansion. There will be natural growth, we hope, but it will not be in the form of diversifying our business to the point where suddenly we have overnight expansion, oh, we got new machinery, suddenly we need to double our workforce or anything like that. It will be the natural course of business, and the nature of our business is very bulk products, so the ratio of size to the amount of employees will never come close to that of a distribution facility or a facility with hard labor. We don't have, our blenders do the majority of the work, we're just packaging them after they come out of the blender. So I would say, even if our business were to expand double of what it is today, which I would not expect for maybe 20 years, our employee count will probably be somewhere around the 50 or 55 mark of current.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Mr. Denave?
Just a few items. With the limited truck traffic, just a question, what's the need for seven loading docks? Is that for future need? I mean, you're cutting out, it's really going to be like four areas there that you're going to be loading from, or three or four areas, but you're going to have actually seven loading docks, the ability to load seven trucks. Do you anticipate more traffic in the future?
We don't, the seven loading docks is also, we're trying to use the space that we have, as opposed to trying to prep for some sort of high traffic. So our primary decision to go with that was because with the appendages that we made, it was appropriate to add that many. It's not a reflection of what our business proposes to use in the future, really.
Would you be willing to agree to a condition? I mean, you indicated that you were going to only have hours of operation, you're not going to have anybody come on site after 5:00 o'clock, and, you know, I'm not sure if the board is even looking to be that restrictive to 5:00 o'clock, but some restriction that if you were to exceed that, you'd have to come back to the board? So if you said 6:00 o'clock or 7:00 o'clock, you know, whatever the board wanted, that if you started operating later, that you'd have to come back here and reopen the, you know, the ability, we get another shot at looking at the amount of traffic and things like that? Is that's?
Yeah, what we're certainly open to is definitely coming back in front of the board if we exceed 5:00 p.m. on truck traffic. What we do have is, we do have sort of sometimes a skeleton night crew that just cleans, but that doesn't involve any traffic, that would just be regular.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about some major change, right? So major, I wouldn't, I'm not talking about a cleaning crew or even employees in there, but if it's something that generates noise, if you find you have a lot of truck traffic or something, if your hours of operation extend, let's say you add a sec, another shift where you say, hey, we're wildly popular and doing great, which we hope you are, if you add another shift, you'd have to come back in front of the board just to discuss it. I'm not saying there's going to be any new big, just if circumstances change, based on the fact you have a big building and could potentially grow into that. If something major changes, you'd be willing to come back in front of this board?
Is this from a noise perspective or disruption?
Yeah, I think it's noise. There are residents, you know, on one side of the property, so I think that, yeah, it would be based on that, more traffic, more, longer hours of operation than you've indicated to the board.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, if something changes in the future and it's going to be generating more disruption or noise, we're certainly open to coming back in front.
Okay. And I leave it to the board for what they want those parameters to be, but you're indicating certain things like not really working on the weekends or only working a certain hours. And I think there's some flexibility there, we're not holding you to 5:00 o'clock, but, you know, there's some hour that probably makes sense that if you're going to trigger that, you'd probably come back.
Yeah, we're very cognizant of the sound and the disruption in that area. Calustian right now is about five or six times larger than Crossroads, and after 5:00 p.m., it's dead quiet, so we suspect that that will continue. We do have a night shift at Calustian, but they arrive 5:00 or 6:00 p.m., and then there is no truck traffic after 5:00 p.m. There's nothing that generates sound, essentially. So we suspect that this operation will be the same for the next many decades.
Okay.
Maybe just by way of suggestion, if it's focused on truck traffic, because obviously they have, you know, cleaning and the like, so maybe add a little flexibility, maybe say 6:00 o'clock, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can come up with a number that you're comfortable with, but any substantive change, and I'll leave that to the board to decide what that winds up being, but, you know, just so no one looks at these minutes and says, well, he said he'd only be here until 5:00, and he really now at the 10:00. You know, if there's a major change, and I'm talking 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, but, you know, anything beyond where someone may reasonably go to sleep, right?
Makes sense.
So the other question I have was involving screening and landscaping. I know that some of the, when they did the redevelopment plan, they said that a lot of landscaping should be on this property. It looks like the screening is substantial on the neighboring property. You know, they talk about the fence being on this property with very specifically having planting on the neighbor's property. So I don't find that there's an issue with the screening out there, but would you be open to doing a walkthrough with the, you know, to make sure that we have adequate screening for the neighbors, and if we find that something's dead, dying, or diseased, you'd remove that and replace it to add adequate screening?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we anticipated that, and Mr. Steiger, who's going to be testifying, will indicate on behalf of our team, Serge and Dynamic, to meet at the site and review a landscaping enhancement if needed.
And one other thing, and it's kind of in that gray area, but the governing body adopted an ordinance for solar on the roof. I don't believe there's solar on this roof. There is currently? Okay.
Yeah, there, I don't know if Bed Bath installed it, but it's about 12 or 13 years old.
Okay. They say for buildings over 100,000 square feet, so you're taking this roof off. Would you be willing to look?
We're actually not taking it off.
Oh, you're going to just elevate it?
What they're going to do is they're going to take the walls down, they're going to put the columns on jacks and actually jack up the entire.
Okay. So you're still going to have solar, you're still going to have solar on this thing?
Our intention is to fully keep the solar, yes.
Okay. All right. That answers that question. That's all I have.
I have a question, out of pure curiosity, about how long does it take to load a truck of that size?
A truck is about 24 pallets. It takes probably about 30 or 40 minutes.
It's curious, because they're big, they're big trucks.
Yeah, they're certainly big trucks, and it's 24 pallets, so it's 24 trips the forklift has to make. You know, that trip can be made in 10 minutes, but typically there is, they're trying to arrange the pallets and trucks, so 30 minutes is a safe.
Any further questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay, we have no further questions.
Great. I'd now like to call upon, thanks, Serge, our architect.
Thank you.
Claudia Beretta.
Sir, will you raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do. Okay. And Claudia, you're going to have to speak right into the microphone, so if you could briefly give the board your credentials, your expertise, licenses as you hold?
Sure. So I'm an architect, and I've been in the field for over 23 years. Graduated from Pratt Institute in New York. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey, as well as 12 other states here on the East Coast, and I've appeared before various planning and zoning boards throughout the state.
Board stipulations?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Mr. Beretta, if you could take the board through the architectural aspects of this project. We heard Mr. Karakas indicate that you're actually going to be lifting the roof. Interesting construction project, but take us through the floor plan elevations.
Sure. So as noted, the project essentially entails alterations and renovations to an existing building. As you can see here, I mean, the building is really split between what we're calling the east and the west building. So the east building is primarily the office function, which is a two-story building plus a partial basement, which is really that dark shade that you see on the plan. The east building is pretty much remaining intact. We're doing some exterior improvements, or facelift, if you will, which I'll talk to when I get to the elevations. But the main scope of the project is really on the west building, which is, as noted earlier, we're raising the roof to meet the criteria, the operational requirements for the blending of the different spices within the building. The footprint is essentially, remains the same, it's untouched, but we are replacing the exterior walls as a result of lifting the roof to the new height. The only items that we are adding beyond the existing footprint is the appendages of Plant South, which are really the loading bays, which we're accommodating six, excuse me, seven loading bays for the trucks to come in and out. You see also on the building, there's an electrical room, and the goal is to keep that electrical room, because it already has all the switchgear and the utilities come into the building, so we're not planning to touch that or demolish that. This plan also, you can see on the top corner, you see a shaded L shape, if you will, and that's a proposed equipment platform, and it's really just to access some of the equipment for the process of the blending of the spices. So this is the second floor, as I noted earlier. On the right is the office component, which again, pretty much is remaining as what it sounds, the office, we're really not changing other than some cosmetic improvements. And really, this is just on the west, looking down to the floor below, and really highlighting the equipment platform. So here you can see some that's being proposed for the elevation. So obviously, the big piece, or the tallest piece is what we call the west wing. The new materials that we're proposing is a base of precast or insulated concrete with about a height of 10 feet, and really, this is just meant to take some abuse, if you will, within the activities within the building. And then the remaining height, maximizing as per the zoning ordinance, it's going to be insulated metal panel. And the design is really just to make the building sort of disappear into the sky, as you can see how it starts from dark and starts going to a light tone, because the goal is really not to be a eyesore with the surrounding neighborhood due to the increased height. The office building is primarily brick, and we're keeping out the brick. Again, we're doing some minor cosmetic upgrades mainly to the main entry, as you can see here. Just to enhance the entry with some new stucco, which has a gray tone, just to have a little bit more curb appeal, and we're proposing new canopy. And also adjusting some of the materials between all the windows, just to break up the existing brick that was there. And then last but not least, that's really a real perspective of what the building would look like. Again, you see the office in the forefront, just some minor cosmetic upgrades, and you can see there the main entry with the new canopy and the signage above. And in the background, you see the operation facility with the increased roof height.
And from architectural standpoint, any problem complying with any of the terms and conditions of the Colliers review?
No.
Great. Chairman, no further questions at this time?
Okay. Questions from the board?
Sir, how many fire department connections will you have in that building? That's a good question. That's why I asked it. Yeah, I don't know.
No, we didn't. You got a fire department comments?
I mean, most of these items, if not all, they're required anyway, so we have to meet the criteria. I'm sorry. All these items listed here are code requirements, so we have to meet them anyways.
Okay. Thank you.
Seems like they have a letter.
Any further questions from the board? Just one question, and I'm not sure if we might have to refer back to the applicant. The act of the grind, not the grinding, blending, and I don't know exactly how much noise it would produce, but would the material that is used in the facility be able to effectively buffer that noise from going out into the exterior and to neighboring areas sufficiently?
We'll get Serge back up.
Yeah.
Talk about that, but essentially, the new exterior materials that we're proposing are actually better than the ones that we're demolishing or removing, because again, like I said, it's insulated, precast panel at the base, so has enough density amassed to absorb sound, and then the panels above are also all rigid insulation panel. But I'll let the applicant speak more.
Yes, the blenders are very low volume. It's like a loud vacuum, so it's. Yes, the, the blenders are, are very low volume, it's like a loud vacuum, so it's not, it's, it's certainly quieter than, even a small lawnmower, these are not loud machines, it's, it's really just a, imagine, um, like a bakery mixer, just in large form, so the motors don't make sound. And so, from the, from the exterior, you will certainly not hear any of the machinery.
And is it just like one, one huge blender, or do you have like multiple?
There is multiple blenders, yes. There's different sizes, we range it from like three hundred kilograms to, to five-ton blenders, so it really just depends on how much of the seasoning we need to make, whether we're gonna do many small batches or, or one large batch. So, yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is this all dry blending, or we have liquid blending as well?
There, it's, it's dry blending, we don't have any liquid blenders. What we do sometimes do is spray the dry powders with like an, like an oleo resin, or like a sunflower oil. That's mainly just to, some, some customers prefer we, we spray those products on there, so it's a, it's a mist spray that we sometimes put on some products, but we do not do any liquid blends. It is, after all, the, the finished product that is coming out is a completely dry powder blend.
So no liquid waste flowing through?
What was that?
No liquid waste.
No liquid waste, no. It is fully absorbed by the product, and the, the sprayer that is actually applying this onto the product, it's, it's misting, it's like a mist, so it is fully absorbed by the time the, the blending is done.
And how do you handle discharge into the environment as far as, uh, blending? Smells and odors and things of that nature?
So the, the nature of blending doesn't have any odor, because we're not generating any heat. The, so pretty much there is, there is very minimal sound of the blender, the odor is, is very negligible. The, all the blenders have dust control systems on them as well, so any odor that were to come out when you're opening a bag of, of some flavor or spice, uh, the, the dust collecting system will, will absorb as well, so, yeah, we don't, we don't expect any leakage into the environment in terms of product smell or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Where, where you store the raw product before it is blended, or the, where, where will that be in the unit?
The raw product is stored in the rest of the warehouse, so in that picture, there was the L, which is our platform to put the blenders, and then the rest of the warehouse is, is product storage, really. And the, we, uh, we're specifically going with the insulated metal panel, because we like to lower the temperature, which will further dampen the smell as well, um, of, of sitting spices, but sitting spices don't typically generate heat, uh, sorry, smell. The smell is generated when there is heat, so when you start to, to rub the product together, like in a grinding process. So even the storage of spices doesn't have a, a very strong smell. So our current facility that we operate in, when you walk into it, there isn't a strong smell of, of, of anything, really.
Really? Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Mr. Cohen?
So the, the product storage in the, the warehouse, is it on racks or just floor storage?
Just floor storage.
Thank you.
We don't, so the, the, we don't plan on putting any racking system, simply just because we don't need it. The, the, the building is plenty large for our use of, of floor storage, so we don't, we store typically two pallets, three pallets high, and that's, that's all we really need.
Thank you.
Any further questions for both businesses? Alright, uh, hearing none, questions from the public? Okay, I think we're ready for your next.
Yes, I'd now like to call upon Joseph Steiger, and Joe's gonna be wearing three hats, engineering, traffic engineer, and planning. And we'll qualify him as all three, otherwise I think he testified before this board, wearing all three hats in some capacity or another.
Sir, will you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm, affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Steiger, I heard my, my introduction, you're going to be testifying, if you could just confirm your qualifications on, in all three of those aspects?
Yes, I have a, a bachelor of science, master of science degree in civil engineering, New Jersey Institute of Technology, and an adjunct professor of civil engineering courses in, at NJIT, professional engineer's license, professional planner's license. I've testified before this board on many occasions as a site engineer, talking about layout, design, and so forth, drainage, as well as traffic, parking, and as a professional planner as well.
Board stipulates.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, so Mr. Steiger, if you could take the board through, I guess, first the engineering aspects, that we can touch on, traffic, and then on, on planning.
Yes, and I wish I knew how to, uh, put up the site plan.
Get one of the young people.
Yeah.
I have it open. So this is the site plan, and then this is that one, and that's all, and then let's make it bigger.
Better stay over there, Natasha.
That's fine.
Yeah, you know, sit here.
And you can go from there, maybe a bigger or smaller.
By the way, I'll skip to the site plan though.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, I think, that's it. So what's, what's being depicted on the screen now is, um, uh, sheet number, well, with the, the site plan, um, for the development. The changes to the site plan are relatively minimal, the building is being increased about three thousand square feet. We have a hundred and seventy-eight, approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet, we're adding three thousand, so we'll have a hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet with the, with the building, uh, as proposed. The other major change, uh, as well, is that we've, um, reoriented, okay, we reoriented, oriented the site layout in terms of the parking and circulation. The parking field is up in the, I'll call it the upper left-hand corner of the site, the northwest corner of the site, for employee parking, visitor parking, and so forth. And then beyond that, we have the, uh, the loading dock on the, on the, on the bottom end as well, along the southerly side of the, of the building itself, so that's the major change. You've heard from the architect, some of the exterior changes to the, to the building, relatively minor, as I said, three thousand square foot difference in, in the square footage of the building, so essentially that building will look the same, other than the loading docks on the south side. There is a, I'll call it a truck court, a place where temporarily trailers and/or trucks can, can stage themselves. And then we have a sawtooth, uh, aspect to the, um, uh, truck loading with, uh, multiple, multiple of, uh, loading docks. So you'll fit two trucks, let's say, in the, in the most easterly loading dock, and then three in the most westerly loading dock, for a total of seven, uh, loading docks. Access will remain the same, uh, the main access to the site is the intersection of Rowley Avenue and Liberty Avenue, signalized intersection. I personally worked on, on the design of that intersection when we re-signalized it and, and widened it to accommodate the much heavier volumes that Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, the former use of the property, experienced versus what's being proposed here. And as a matter of fact, what we did, we compared the trip generation of the two types of uses. The former use was essentially an office use, and we used the ITE twelfth edition, uh, trip generation rates. And the, that existing building of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand square foot office would generate over two hundred trips per hour during the AM and the PM peak hour. In addition to that, comparing it to an industrial use, uh, using the ITE trip generation of about forty-five trips AM and PM. So there's a vast reduction of over two hundred, down to forty-five, um, peak hour trips. The intersection, particularly the signalized intersection at Rowway Avenue, certainly handled that aspect or that magnitude of traffic without any negative impacts to the operation, but overall, you see what was experienced previously on this site. There's a vast, um, decrease. The number of parking spaces is a hundred and seventy-seven are proposed, and a hundred and seventy-four spaces are required, taking, taking credit for the eight, um, uh, EV spaces that's being provided as well. So we have a little bit of excess in, of parking that's required per your, per your ordinance. Even though we know we're not gonna need those parking spaces, um, we're not, we're not really physically adding any parking spaces. It's really just designating some EV spaces, of which by statute, state statute, you can take credit for it. So it's just a, it's a, it's a comparison of what you, what you're required versus what you're being, what is proposed, and as I said, there's an excess of what's, uh, what's required. We designed the, uh, aspect of the layout, let me get down to, if I can, get down to the, um, yeah, that's what I figured. Natasha, how do I, oh, here we go, alright. We laid out the, uh, the design, here we have, um, a tractor trailer, this is a, um, a wheelbase, uh, a wheelbase sixty-seven. So this is a fifty-three-foot tractor trailer with an extended cab, this is the, the largest vehicle that's allowed on, by, by motor vehicle law, allowed on the, on the roadway. There is one slight error in the layout of this, as you can see, that truck is being, accessing the site from the north. There's no trucks allowed on Liberty Avenue, north of Rowway Avenue. So that truck would either be making a left-hand turn into the site, or coming straight across from Rowway Avenue. As you can see, as this vehicle does make that right-hand turn into the site, it takes up all of that driveway space, that if anybody was trying to exit the driveway, um, they would, uh, have a common conflict with that truck. But as a left-hand turn, it's a much easier movement, because you're making a much wider swing to get into the site, or obviously as a straight movement as well, you, from Rowway Avenue, it's a, it's a straight maneuver that you would not impact, uh, that exit lanes of, of the intersection itself. And then the circulation of that truck would be in a counterclockwise direction to get into the, the loading, loading area, and back, backing into the loading docks, and then front out of that, and then make the, the turn, again, either, either a, a right-hand turn or a straight move in onto Rowway Avenue. We took a look at the fire trucks, uh, your, your township fire trucks ensure that we have adequate circulation for, for those largest vehicles, the hook-and-ladder vehicles, ladder trucks, as well as single-unit trucks, garbage trucks, and, and so forth. So this site, it basically works very well in terms of safe access, minimal impact to roadway conditions in the area, and adequacy of, of parking, all the parking spaces are in accordance with the, your ordinance required, requirements of nine by eighteen, and twenty-four-foot aisles, minimum aisle, uh, width as well. There are a couple of, uh, oh, let me, let me mention one other thing, there is a reduction, I'll go over the, um, that is one of the, the deviations from the redevelopment plan, um, there is a, um, a decrease in the amount of impervious cover, and when we designed the stormwater drainage on the site as well, we do decrease the amount of water, the quality of the water is improved, and each discharge point of, of, that leaves the site into existing catch basins and so forth, there's actually a reduction in peak flow. So there is a benefit of, uh, by, by reducing the amount of impervious cover, we're able to decrease and control better the, the outflow from the site as well to, 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 in order to incorporate those attributes of improved discharge, stormwater discharge. That's, that's the main points of the, of the site layout, uh, it was a rather easy engineering design. Basically, the build, the, the site doesn't change much at all, other than the loading docks being, uh, being obtained. The next step, I probably would like to go through your engineer's comment letter, because it discusses the, the deviations from the redevelopment plan, and points out, um, a few items, several items, I should say, that, uh, Mr. Danavi was looking for testimony on as well. So I'll jump into that, unless you want me to stop for questions, just keep rolling? So there are four deviations from the, um, from the redevelopment plan. One is maximum lot coverage. Eighty percent is your maximum per ordinance, and we're providing eighty-three point six percent. However, that's a decrease of approximately three percent, because the existing impervious cover is eighty-six point seven. So the, you're allowed eighty percent, the existing site has eighty-six point seven percent, we're dropping it down to eighty-three percent. If we were to do any, any furthermore, I think it would have a detrimental effect on the circulation. It would reduce the parking, so then we have a parking variance, so there, that was the limitations that we're dealing with, um, for the site. But as I said, we're making things better, and we're reducing, um, the stormwater generation of this site. One other aspect is the landscape of the loading areas, there are, we are landscaping it to a degree. It still will be visible from, uh, from Liberty Avenue, um, but we've done as best we can for that area. We do have a fence line, a vinyl fence, solid vinyl fence, six feet high, along that, uh, that southerly edge, as well as the westerly edge. As I think was discussed, um, a bit, we're more than willing to work with your engineer to fill in any landscape spaces that we can enhance that landscaping and improve the buffer even further. So we ask, we're asking for that, again, dealing with an existing site, doing the best that we can in terms of what we're able to deal with without having a clean slate. Another aspect dealing with landscaping is that two hundred square feet of landscaped islands are required for every thirty parking spaces. We do have, um, if we were to take, uh, take out some pavement, even though we have some striped areas, they're rather narrow, you'd need to, two hundred square feet, eighteen-foot parking spaces, you need a width of five and a half feet, a little more than five and a half feet. We would have to then restripe, we, if we were, if we were going to widen that, um, that, we would have to restripe the whole parking area, we would probably need to lose, uh, a couple of parking spaces as well. So what we would prefer is to enhance, which we've done to a degree, willing to do some more, of the perimeter of the site as well. I think it'd be more effective in, in providing screening and buffering to, to align that landscaping along our neighborhoods, neighbors' property lines as well. So again, we have, we have a hardship here, dealing with an existing site, providing adherence to that requirement, providing for the, um, five and a half foot spa, wide spa, landscaped islands, we'd lose spaces, we would have to restripe the whole parking lot. So rather than do that, I think it'd be much more effective if we provide that perimeter landscaping and buffering. And last but not least, um, there, um, it's, I think it's rather ambiguous, but the refuse area needs to be located adjacent at, uh, so, excuse me, located in or adjacent to the loading area. Essentially it is, it's down in the, I call it the, um, southeast corner of the site, there's an existing, um, uh, refuse area with a compactor. It's going to remain, it's adjacent, in my mind, to the loading areas, uh, but if there's any degree that, well, you could have done better, again, we're keeping it where it exists today, um, it's, it's, um, it's away from, uh, let's say, the properties, um, residential, or residential neighbors, it's the furthest distance away from them, so it's probably the best location that it should be, be, belong in. So if there is any deviation in anybody's mind, I think it's justified, that it's worked before, uh, we're leaving it in the same, same position, and I believe it is, um, not, um, very visible at all to anybody, um, passing by the site or, or living near the site. So those are the four deviations that, um, that we are, are asking relief on, and I believe providing the justifications for them. There were several, um, and I'll leave to Mr. Danavi if I'm, I'm missing any, where we asked for, for, uh, testimony regarding some of the issues. for testimony regarding some of the issues, and the first one that jumps to me is on the third page, number three, traffic and parking in the center of the third page. Significant, the traffic report indicates a significant reduction in both AM and PM peak hours. Testimony should be provided to discuss the impacts that the loading and unloading of trucks, and the turning in and out of the site may have on the motoring public and adjacent neighborhood. As I said before, this intersection was designed for tractor-trailers, when Bed Bath &amp; Beyond was there, and made the improvements to that intersection. So as I pointed out before, making a left-in, or through movement in, or through movement out onto Rowway Avenue creates no negative impact in affecting the movements at that intersection itself, and then the perimeter counterclockwise direction through the property is a safe attribute. There's a separation between the employee parking and the truck traffic itself, so it's segregated in terms of where those movements are going to occur. Jumping ahead in Mr. Denave's report, I'll jump to section 5.2, talks about the perimeter, I'm sorry, the landscaping predominantly along the perimeter of the building that are acceptable to this office, however, there are deviations from the parking lot landscaping, which I talked about as well. Let's see, jumping down to 6.2, oh, this, again, I, Mr. Denave made a good point of providing the landscaping if and where it's possible on the, I'll say, the outside of the fence, or the residential neighbor's side of the fence, more than willing to work with him on that, and it's a good idea that we do provide that as well. 6.3 talks about the same thing, residential side of the fence. And jumping down to 8.2, talks about the flood zone, the FEMA map, and we certainly are outside of any flood plain, so there's no effect there. And I think that's, that's it.
8.1, I think on a large site like this, there's plenty of area for staging of snow, is this?
8.1? Oh, snow, snow?
Yeah.
Yeah, snow removal, we do have areas, well, we have 177 parking spaces, you heard from testimony, we only got 30 employees there, so we're going to have large areas of, I'll call it pavement, that unused, that we could provide for storage, not that, and if it's ever needed, we do have perimeter areas, landscaped areas, if it needs to be trucked off, it would be trucked off as well, but I think we have way more than sufficient parking that we can cordon off some of the pavement areas for storage of, for snow.
Right. I have no further questions at this time for Mr. Steiger.
Questions from the board?
I have a question relative to, which, it's not really relative to your testimony, sir, but the area where refuse, what kind of refuse is generated from this particular manufacturer?
I, you know, I'm not sure.
I'm not either.
Probably have the applicant, we'll talk about that.
Greg, Serge up here for a second.
I'm not trying to.
And B, it's an existing business, you have a history with this, so.
Yes.
So the only waste we generate really is empty bags from our raw material, broken pallets, or really just floor sweepings. We don't generate any sort of toxic or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would assume typical office supplies too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, typical stuff like that, specific to our business, it's really just bags and pallets, and we compact that stuff anyway, so the waste management coming and picking that up, it's not like a daily thing, it's once a week.
And that'd be private pickup?
Yeah. Any further questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay, we have no further questions?
We have no further witnesses, obviously.
Know that we could accept that after 10 o'clock?
Are here to, no, we appreciate the board's time and consideration.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the application? Moved by Ms. Khan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Frame, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Frame?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Bowser?
Yes.
Committeewoman Terrell?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes, and I want to thank you for bringing in business into union and supplying jobs for unionites, yes.
I'm sorry, Chairman Lee?
Yes.
Well, again, thank you very much for your time, and excited to have Serge and his family, as Ms. Khan said, make further investment into the township.
I think we all second Mrs. Khan's sentiments there.
Absolutely.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cohen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Frame, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.